Here.
Number Kamara.
Here.
Number Mailman.
Here.
Number McCullough.
Here.
Number Paulino.
Here.
Here. Okay, so we have the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda on a roll call.
Number Clancy.
Yes.
Like you Johnson.
Yes.
Number Kamara.
Yes.
Number Mailman.
Yes.
Number McCullough.
Yes.
Number Paulino.
Yes.
And you're there.
Yes. Okay, we have a number of recognitions. Our first one is to recognize Superintendent Benenda for her years of dedicated service to the list of public schools. Congratulations. And so, might I go down and say something?
Try.
Who's?
Is that how you want me?
I want to grab the... Yeah. Well said. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we had a great recognition Tuesday at South High School and a number of awards are given. I thought it was a great working with Jeff Creamer and the school committee, naming the athletic complex after Maureen Benenda Athletic Complex. And I think that's going to be wonderful. And that was done by us and the staff at South High School. And but I just want to congratulate you on your 46 years of service, six years as superintendent, and prior to that, really dedicating your life to students, teachers, the educators, power educators, and the staff throughout the district in the community. It wasn't just about the schools, but it was about the community also. You dedicated a lot of your time at South High School, or even the cheerleading coach, swim coach, or lifeguard, or field hockey, field hockey coach was the other one. But I just want to thank you. I think you're very dedicated to everything you did. And whether it be at seven in the morning, at three in the morning, or midnight, you're always available. And not only just always available, but tracking down students at midnight and making sure they're okay. So I do, on behalf of the people of Worcester, we offer, in this case, we have a going-away gift. A chair of the City of Worcester School Committee in the schools, and it's well-deserved. And again, I just want to say it's well-deserved. When I first met you, I think it was real when I first got on the council, and you were always with the South High marching band in the community. That's where I got to know you the most. And you did a wonderful job. That's why I used to, would be in these attic, taking care of your students. You're a wonderful, great principal at South High School. And that's why it was a great honor to see you open up that school to end of this year. So congratulations. Wish you well in your retirement. I'm sure you won't be retired long. And but congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to congratulate Superintendent Benenda. I've known Superintendent Benenda pretty much my entire life. As a young girl, my mother and Superintendent Benenda, at the time, were both educators at South High School. And I can certainly remember her, even as a young girl, attending athletic events and being at every event that was at the school that I can remember going to as a child. But I also had the opportunity, as I got older, well before my time on the school committee, when I was doing work with Central Mass Housing Alliance, worked with Superintendent Benenda on many different community initiatives that benefited not only our students but children throughout Worcester and Worcester County. I think, you know, we talked a lot about wraparound coordinators tonight. I think Superintendent was a wraparound coordinator before we had wraparound coordinators. And what she did as her role as an educator, always making sure that her students were supported and had what they need, and helping their families assimilate. You know, through your time as a superintendent, we've had many different groups come from other countries and need assistance and need help. And you've been right there every single time to make sure they're getting connected with the correct agencies and services they need and getting them in the schools. And certainly appreciate all that you've done during your 46 years in the Worcester Public Schools for all of the students. And, you know, certainly over the years, I've heard from many of your former students who are now educators and former field hockey players who are now educators. And, you know, you've certainly touched many, many lives in the time here in Worcester. So I want to say congratulations. I can't wait to hear about your next adventures. And I hope some of them involve some vacations, so, and enjoying some time with your family. So thank you for all you've done, and congratulations.
Number Kamara.
Thank you. I think Molly took all the words there. I just want to say thank you so much to Superintendent Benenda, who I always say was my principal in high school. And I remember my first, you know, days at South High, you know, we were connected through that, through the many days of community service learning program. You were all there with us. To the Worcester Fusa teachers, even the summer months at Worcester State University, you were there, and all the different programs that we had at South High. You were always there and really supportive of all the students, including myself. And it was a wonderful experience with your leadership at South High. I remember, like particularly, some of the ideas of college, when you used to go on an intercom and announce the different universities where students were applying and actually got accepted to. I remember, you know, just standing in the hallways and just thinking, oh, well, maybe one day it'll be me, you know, being called on the intercom. And surely enough, in my, you know, my senior year, you did announce all the students that got accepted into those universities too. And so many great things. And I wish you all the best in your retirement. And I definitely know that, like, you're not going to retire. But I look forward to working with you, and it's been a pleasure working with you on the school committee. I think the, all of the values that you did install, install in all of the students at South High, I can say that some of that too has been married in my leadership here on the school committee. And that I think it's great. So thank you again.
Number Clancy.
Thank you. Maureen, I just wanted to wish you good luck in your next chapter. I've had the pleasure of working with you, not only in my role as school committee, but for, I first met you, I don't, 16 years ago, when you were up at South High. And I know that I had many, many meetings with you, and no matter what, who I was there for or what I was there for, you always gave the students second, third, fourth chances. You were always there to, you know, support them. And I've directly, I've seen, directly seen the impact that you have had on our students, and that you care, and that you have really made a difference, not just in our schools, but truly for the city. And I thank you for that. And I'm going to miss your smile. You're always smiling. Thank you, Maureen.
Stacia Zogby.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for being such a dedicated leader towards students in our district. I remember a few years ago, just being on the superintendent's advisory committee, just traveling around to the other schools. My sophomore yourself, you really made me inspired to get involved in the politics in our city, and here I am. And I wouldn't have been able to do that without you. So thank you very much for that. I do want to highlight what you spoke to us yesterday at the Girls Inc. graduation about the colored pencils. That really sat with me. It really showcases your leadership and your dedication and your hard-workingness. And that's why you keep sharpening those pencils. So thank you for all of your dedication. I really do wish you the best in your retirement, and thank you so much.
Good job. Number Mailman. Yeah, in the microphone, maybe, so. Just got to turn it on.
So, Stacia, I want to thank you for the colored pencils. Just a short story on that is that I'm alumni of Girls Inc. I started going to Girls Inc. when I was six years old. And it really made a difference in my life. And I was explaining that leadership really came from Girls Inc. There was a librarian there, and she ran a contest every month to color the calendar of the, a calendar, but you would do by the month. And if you did a great job, you got a prize. So I was 10 years old, and I wanted the prize. So one day I won the monthly calendar. And what the prize was, is that you got to sharpen all the colored pencils. And so what that really meant for me was that, that was the job. I showed up, I would sharpen all the colored pencils, because how you would win the prize is that you would use these colored pencils to color the calendar. So I would show up, I would distribute colored pencils to the other children that wanted to use them. And it was the first role that I had at 10 years old. And I found when my family moved away from, from the area, still in Worcester, but I couldn't get to the girls' club anymore, I had the job of picking the next boss of the colored pencils. So when I see colored pencils, I think back to the girls' club and my first leadership job, and I learned so much then, and I carried with me. So I do connect that to eventually being superintendent. Thank you, Stacia.
So I want to pass along my husband's wishes, because I think he likes tough Irish women, and you are one of those. I want to thank you. I've known you my whole adult working life, you know, in different community events, but mostly as my time as chair of general advisory at Worcester Tech. And your support and encouragement around increasing vocational programs so that we could achieve an 18-hour is a big deal. And we got it done with IPP, and we got it done with nightlife, and I thank you. I know there were a lot of people that got involved with that process, and they were funders from outside that actually have helped us in a lot of different areas. And you were supportive of that, and you were interested in it, and so interested that we've expanded programming more than any other gateway city across our comprehensive high schools. And when we built Doherty, you were good enough to make sure that we had vocational people at the table to decide which of those programs were going to go. So I feel that's a real, you know, achievement to the system that you made happen. You speak your mind, and many people like it or don't like it. But what I think is, I like it, whether I agree with you or don't agree with you. I think it's refreshing. And I love the back and forth you have with Tracy quite a bit, because neither one of you is going to give up very much. But it makes for a stronger system, and it makes for a stronger answer. So thank you for being you. And then, the best example was, the last example was with, when Mayor Petty, you know, said we were going to do the athletic field. And as soon as Maureen got up to give her speech, she said, "Think about that. A woman being named after the athletic field." And I thought that was so awesome, and I thought that was so, yes, Gemma and I were very happy. And you pointed it out, and that seemed to epitomize me too. So thank you. Thanks for all your work for this district.
Johnson.
Thank you. Maureen, I want to say congratulations, and probably everyone knows, you know, I had the pleasure of meeting Maureen as a freshman at South in 1988, and have known her ever since then. You know, I think we have a special bond, and, you know, my first year there, we went through a lot of turmoil and had some difficult times. And, you know, I was able to understand what the South High community is all about, and the teachers and the principals. And you've always been a person who have demonstrated that. You were my wife's field hockey coach and cheerleading coach at high school as well. And, you know, she wanted to say congratulations. She hasn't been able to connect with you, but I would give her your number to say that. You've always been supportive of me, supportive of my kids, always doing that. She also hired me at South High as a basketball coach, which I did 10 years there as well. So I worked under her coaching basketball as well. But, and again, I appreciate your support and your dedication to the Worcester community, to our kids, and all the work that you've done. A lot of people talk about the work you've done at South, and we understand that's your baby, not your love or whatever, but you've done a lot of work in other schools and with tons of students throughout the district. And for that, we are grateful. I'm grateful for the work that you have done, and I wish you all the best moving forward in your retirement. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Ms. Norbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In attending the graduations, we of course got to hear some of the graduation speeches. And I was reflecting, as I continued to hear the mayor talk about the 46 years of service, which I think those of us that were graduation heard, you know, all of those many times, I was reflecting this weekend that that's not really a model that we see anymore, that that used to be a thing that a lot of people did, of, in particular, girls would graduate from high school, and they would go off to the state normal school, and they would get their teaching degree, and they would go back to their hometowns, and then they would teach in that same school, if they were lucky, in the same district for decades. And it struck me that, you know, we certainly talked about, about Maureen keeping faith with the Worcester Public Schools. But there's also a part, a way in which the district keeps faith with educators. And I was reflecting on the fact that that isn't as much of a model that we follow anymore. And wondering if there's, you know, something that we can sort of reflect on here in terms of Maureen's length of service, and what that sort of has modeled and what that has meant to the system, and what that means for us, in fact, in terms of sort of moving forward. And Maureen, we certainly, we wish you all the best in retirement. We hope it's a long and a happy one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bean Carey will make an exception for you tonight, former school committee member.
Good evening. Thank you, ma'am. Maureen, saying thank you to you for your years of service. Everyone touched upon different stories. And I think back of how fortunate I've been that I not only worked with you when I was an employee for Worcester Public Schools, but I was a school committee member and you were superintendent. I was very proud of the fact that, as we looked at what we did in the history of the City of Worcester, that someone from the east side was able to move up and get onto the school committee, especially a female. And then we looked at what Maureen Benenda has done, and it's endless. You have made a mark in the history of our city. You can be proud for now until forever. It's something that, whether we tell a story, which I'm going to, which will be very brief, but I was working with Maureen on a project a couple of years ago as a school committee member. Her phone rang, and it was someone looking for help. And they weren't looking for themselves, they were looking for a family. That family had just arrived into the city. Within 20 minutes, Maureen had a closet full of clothes, a closet full of food, and somewhere for them to sleep, not just for that night, for a couple of weeks. I think it took her about 20 minutes and about four or five phone calls. And I sat there laughing, thinking to myself, there's not many people, and not even today, that would have the ability to do that, or even take the step to do that and say on the phone, when they got that initial phone call, "I'll get this done for you. Give me a little while." We put aside our papers. She started her phone calls, and they were settled. I've watched you over the years, as a former Worcester Public School employee, work with students on different projects, work with parents, work with neighborhood centers. It's always been successful. That's why I really, truly believe that you leave a mark in the history of our city. The chair you're sitting in will make you think back when you bring it home. Think back of all the fond memories that you have had and all the successes that you've had. When you walk down the street, you'll see a student that's now an adult, that's working, that has a family, that owns a home, that's renting, that's happy. Telling you that I wish you continued success. I truly hope that you enjoy your new adventures, that you and your family wish you good, good health, and wish you success in what you want to do. Just make sure you keep that smile, you stay engaged, and never, ever forget that your accomplishments have not helped one person, not helped 10 people, you helped thousands. Congratulations, and I wish you the best. Salute.
Thank you, everyone, for your kind words. I just wanted to say a few words myself. I spent a long time thinking of my speech when I, when I, I'm the graduate of class of 2022, like Stacia over there, right? When I had my retirement party, and I, it was, I spent a lot of time thinking about what I wanted to say. So I went back to that speech and condensed it, because so many people didn't hear what some of the important parts were. So I just want to share a few. So I began my teaching career in the Worcester Public Schools at age 22, and have now arrived at the last chapter 46 years later. How do I tell the amazing story of this journey? I will continue to tell it by sharing the story of success of our Worcester Public School students. I will tell it by sharing the stories of the most dedicated and hard-working Worcester Public School staff and district staff. In writing this message, I am thankful for the thousands of caring people who have touched my life. First, I would like to recognize and thank my husband, Ed, and my daughter, Mari-Kate. Our lives really centered around my work. Family outings involved, tending South High athletic events, dances, South High parades, concerts, field trips, South High sports camps, swimming in the South High pool, taking students on college visits, visiting dorm rooms, fundraising for events, delivering food and clothing, and comforting grieving families. South High students and staff joined us at our home for cookouts and holiday meals. The spirit and culture of South High always embraced us and continued to push us to give more. I have had the most amazing opportunity to work with community partners. I appreciate the work of the LEI, ACE, CAC, WAM, REAC, all these little acronyms, WEC, WDF, Worcester State University, Quinn-Sigman Community College, Holy Cross, Assumption, CLAC, WPI, Anna Maria, the Worcester Police and Fire, and DPW, Worcester Together, United Way, Work for Worcester, Audubon, Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., the YW and YMCA's, Masculine Pharmacy, Fontaine Brothers, Lamro, Pagano Architects, Hanover Theater, Unum, Edward Kennedy and Family Health Centers, my friendship with Dr. Hirsch, also Dr. Matty Castile. So how do you thank all those who have given you so much? The community partners gave our students so much. They gave us dentures, root canals, glass eyes, glasses, healthcare. They gave us clothing, shoes, food, scholarships, jobs, mentoring, musical instruments, driving lessons, campships, leaps, swimming lessons, music lessons, dance lessons, sports, books, college courses, and even built playgrounds and much more. I'm also thankful for the partnership with the City of Worcester. It's very important that the school side and the city side work together. So very thankful that I had the relationship with my friend, Ed Augustus, Mayor Joe Petty, and now Eric Batista, Nicole Valentine, Mike Trainer, Tim McGordy from here, and all city hall employees. You see, we formed a strong bond, and we worked together to solve any problem that came up. Just think, a Worcester Public School student, I can become a teacher, a coach, an assistant principal, a principal, and rise to be superintendent of the Worcester Public Schools. I hope those listening to this speech tonight follow the same path. It is a rewarding and honorable career. So as I conclude this farewell speech, my thoughts are with all those snippets of time that I've shared with all of you. Thank you to Mayor Petty and the members of the school committee, South Principal Jeff Creamer, for providing the honor of naming new South High Athletic Complex after me. I can't wait to attend the first homecoming game. And finally, as one wise person said, "If you're brave enough to say goodbye, life will reward you with a new hello." I look forward to my new hello. Thank you.
You might be at the first homecoming game before we get to sign up. But congratulations, and wish you well. And also, there was a party of honors, also on behalf of the school community, so thank you for your service also. Thank you. Okay, I think we have a number of students for the science fair. If people want to, who's here for the science fair? Just curious. If you want to come on inside, right in front here, we'll recognize you if you like. Oh, you can stand, or come right up front if you want. Right there, go, right in there, right in there. There you go. Oh, perfect, right up in front. We get the advisors too?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, I just want to congratulate everyone. The science fair, Envirothon process is not only a strong element for participants for college application, it also builds essential skills for success in the 21st century careers such as critical and creative thinking, communication, teamwork, ethical decision-making. And both programs, recognition was given to the most talented middle and high school students, and the best of the best, projects and presentations, scientific research, engineering, design. Congratulations. We won a number of prizes, and I want to thank your advisors. I know all the students are here, but does the advisor want to mention who the students are, real quick? And you can use the microphone right there, maybe?
Sure. I'm Stacy Hill. I'm the advisor and the coach for the Envirothon team from Doherty. And I have Fabiola Telhai, Oleana Tegu, Victoria Wakadilo, and Dea Camberry, and my co-coach, Jess Racine from Doherty. And these students won fourth place in the statewide Envirothon competition in May, and they placed third in the current issue presentation part of that competition.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
Alicia Samadi. I'm the STEM Fair advisor at Forest Grove. We have Clarie, Paula, Isabel, Nelson, Evan, Jordan, Harrison, Jack. Where'd Evan go? Oh, there's Evan. Ziana. Did I miss anybody? So we had a number of placements ranging from honorable mention to third place at the regional science fair, and then honorable mention and third place, I believe, oh, no, I'm sorry, second place with a coding for commitment award with Jack here for second place at the state science fair. We're very proud of that. They worked very hard this year, and I would be remiss if I did not mention our mentors from ABV, because they are essential in keeping our club up and running. So great job this year, guys.
Great job. Why don't you all turn around so your parents can get your picture?
We also have an on, I see an online participant there. So we have Maya Shushkin, who's joining us virtually. Hi, Maya. So Maya is a former Forest Grove Middle School student. She's now a South High School student. And Emily Richmond was her advisor at South High School this year. And Maya... and Emily Richmond was her advisor at South High School this year, and Maya, at the State High School Science Fair, won third place for her project of mobile carbon capture. And then she got to move on to the International Science and Engineering Fair, which is a huge feat, and she actually placed with a special, she placed fourth place at the International Science and Engineering Fair, and then had the special award for the second place from the American Chemical Society. So Maya, congratulations, and don't worry. I know Maya's already requesting and ready to start on her project for next year, Maya, and we're ready, so we've got you. All right? All right. I'd also like to just recognize our Christine Lloyd, Science and Engineering liaison, City of Worcester, and I'd like to recognize Alicia Samanti as well. She received a special recognition this year and got to go to Washington DC for a program to bring back to the City of Worcester all about science fair and how to incorporate more into our classrooms, and how to increase the social networking of our students so that they're not just getting the academic support that they need, but learning how to social network outside of our community so they can grow that and then really get and build our STEM career here in Worcester. So congratulations, Alicia. You're welcome.
Well, congratulations, everyone. You made Worcester proud, and keep up the great work, keep your studies going, and junior high, high school, and to college, and you're going to do very well. Congratulations. They just did that, but you can turn around again and. Thank you, everyone. Okay, go back to the agenda here. We have Ms. McCullough to recognize Lieutenant Colonel Edward Arlen for his years of service at Burnco JROTC. Okay, you gonna speak, are you gonna speak to it? Okay. I don't think so. Is Lieutenant, is he here? Oh, there he is, right in the front.
I just wanted to make sure you were here first before I congratulated you. So I just wanted to wish you a big congratulations on your retirement. I know that I heard from a lot of parents, students, and families about the amazing work that you've done in your role as the JR, with JROTC at Burnco High School, as well additionally from the faculty and staff at Burnco, and the difference that you've made in the lives of those students. And we know what a valuable program that is for our students and how it prepares them for different parts of their lives and different situations that they are in, and just how much they admire you and respect you, and what that meant to them in your years that you have been in that role. So I want to congratulate you and thank you on that, and certainly if you have a few words that you would like to say, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Just briefly, it's been my pleasure for the last 16 years. The program's been going on for 28 years, and I hope it goes for many, many more. Many, many students have gone through there, some successes, some not, some surprises, but they're all good kids, and I appreciate the support we've gotten from the city, school committee, our principals, our administration, and everybody else that we can think of. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for the lives that you've touched of our students. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. McCullough to recognize the Worcester Tech Track Team and head coach Gerald Snay on their state vocational championship. Oh, is he here? Oh, okay.
I'm so glad that those of you who are here tonight could be here with us. I know this is such an honor. I know, you know, certainly the last few years have been challenging for all of our students, and in particular, getting student athletes back on track, pun intended, but I know that you've had a very successful year this year and have placed in different competitions, not just as state final, state champions for the Worcester Vocat, uh, Worcester, Massachusetts Vocational Champions, and you've had many honors throughout the year. I'm actually surprised we're missing one of the members of your team, Isabel Rose, who I know is part of the team tonight, so I heard a lot about it from her throughout this past year and how hard you all worked and the successes that you have, and we're just so proud of you. And I know it takes a lot of time and commitment for you to be part of extracurricular activities on top of your studies, so you're not only doing well out there in your athletics, but you're doing well in the classroom to maintain your grades, to be able to participate. So we're just so proud of all of you, and congratulate you, and congratulate your coach on such a successful year and such an honor. So we're so happy to have you here tonight. Congratulations. Only if you'd want to.
All, all of the, the issues that we've gone through for the last few years and having an abbreviated season last year, and having a group of kids that, for the, for the majority of what we see here, these athletes had, most of them had never done this sport before. So the expectations for us this year were exceeded tenfold. We actually have a young lady here, Ohema, who actually qualified for the New Balance Nationals. We leave tomorrow, she'll compete Saturday. So everybody you see here is a returner. We have a great senior leadership group and this next group of seniors, hopefully we can continue this success again. Thank you.
Congratulations, job well done, Coach. Thank you. Thank you. This brings us, what's that? We got one more to go?
I'm just trying to figure out what direction you're going.
To recognize Stacia Zagby for outstanding commitment as an ex-official student representative. Stacia, I'll just say, I'm very impressed with you and wish you well, whatever endeavors you go forward, forward with, I know you'll be very successful. You were, in addition to the school committee, and I spoke your mind, and I think you did a wonderful job, because I just have a quick presentation for you. Oh, the family stuff? Okay.
Okay. And thank you.
Your daughter's very lovely. And over the course of your time as ex-official member of the Worcester School Committee, you have been a progressive student voice of understanding. You were instrumental in running a student's social media policy, and your contributions to the search for a new superintendent earned you the respect of your fellow committee members. Thank you for giving your time and talent so freely to the benefit of the Worcester Public Schools and the Worcester School Committee. I wish you all the best in the years to come. It's my pleasure to present you with the key to the City of Worcester in recognition of your service as ex-official member of the Worcester School Committee.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to set off another round of speeches, but may I say something as well?
Certainly. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As most of you know, I had the honor, privilege, and sort of constant running of, of being Stacia's mentor this year, which I greatly appreciated in, as all we, as we all know, in the best mentor-mentee relationships both sides gain and learn something. It's genuinely been an honor to be Stacia's mentee. As Dr. Frill knows, one of my frustrations ever since the beginning of my service in the Worcester School Committee has been that dang chapter of the NGL and the Student Advisory Council and whether or not we could actually ever get an ex officio relationship to work. And while Dr. Frill has given it her all year after year, it clicked this year, and a lot of that, of course, had to do with Stacia and Stacia's work, as well as honestly the work of the rest of our student representatives who were always very, very faithful, not only in attending the meetings, but in being absolutely quietly, patiently, and politely determined to represent, to authentically represent the voice of the students of the, the Worcester Public Schools. And I am giving my commitment tonight to Stacia that her leaving will not mean that that evaporates. I know that there really could be no better tribute to her work for us than to ensure that we continue to have a student advisory council and continue to have a student, ex officio member who genuinely represents the voice of the students. And so we have something for you this evening as well, from, this is from the school committee. I'm going to give away at least part of the present because I think that all of us know that regardless of what you do in life, you probably will not sit around a board table for the last time this evening. And so one of the things we're giving you is the latest edition of Robert's Tools of Order, which has been signed by all the members of the Worcester School Committee, Mayor Petty, because we are sure that you will have reason to use it. So thank you.
Congratulations. Why don't you tell everybody where you're going to school next year, if we make that? You go, definitely chose the Bentley. Congratulations. Good, good school. Okay, next we are going to the public comment. If people want to speak on any item on the agenda, there has to be an item on the agenda, and you have up to two minutes, so the item on the agenda and your name and see your residence.
Alicia Samanti, Worcester resident, and I just wanted to step up and say thank you to committee member Laura Clancy. The Educational Association recently had sent out invitations to our school committee members to shadow various employees, staff, and faculty within the Worcester Public Schools, and I had the pleasure of hosting Mrs. Clancy for a couple of hours. Fortunately, my students had a virtual field trip with UMass Chen Medical School, which really gave us the opportunity to really discuss some of the successes we've seen over the last few years, our gaps and where we need supports, and we had some really transparent, open, and honest communication, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate you taking the time and I appreciate you listening in our back and forth discussion. And with that, and seeing what we're seeing in our, our new setup with school committee and a lot of things moving forward in Worcester, I'm just really looking forward to seeing a cohesive collaboration between the school committee, the Educational Association of Worcester, and our district leadership to bring what we need for our students after all we've been through in the last couple of years. So, Mrs. Clancy, thank you very much for taking the time to spend with me.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jen Forleo. I am a resident of Rutland, but I am a paraprofessional in kindergarten at Jacob High at Magnet School. I am also here, and I apologize, I do need to use my phone to just look at the notes because it's past my bedtime, so, the elementary schools are killing me right now. So I am actually just here to publicly thank Vice Chair Johnson for shadowing me in kindergarten for half a day. It was a lot of fun, and I really appreciate you coming. The kids were very upset when you left, and they kept on saying, where's the really tall guy? So you are welcome back, according to them, they didn't want you to leave. We're all short in there, so, they're the same size as me. So I just wanted to really, really thank you for that. The kids loved having you there. The most, I guess, meaningful part for me was the conversation that we had afterwards, and the fact that you were willing to listen to what my concerns, what my joys were and all of that, and have an honest conversation is something that I hope that we can all continue to have, and that if we continue to have those conversations, hopefully we'll have some more understanding between everybody. And you are all welcome to kindergarten, any day, I, not tomorrow, but any day, any day you want to come, please come. Thank you.
Hi, Melinda Martin, resident of Worcester, and I've actually already thanked the mayor, who aka is known as the president at Norback. I'm here to thank Ms. McCullough for visiting with Nancy Pepler, a multilingual Learner's Department Head who works in the Parent Information Center, and this is for you. She said the multilingual Welcome Center and the Parent Info Center, we're happy to welcome Molly McCullough last week to our offices. It was great to show her a little bit of what we do and the families we see. Molly was very interested and asked a lot of questions. She even volunteered to revisit us in August, when it is a busy time, and help out where she could. Thank you, Molly, and we look forward to your next visit. And truly, that, I know that that's with heart because it's great to see, again, the involvement between school committee and the schools. You guys are now seeing what we do, why we're asking for what we ask, and hopefully you're getting a feel for, you know, truly what we do on a day-to-day basis. The next one is from Tina Mansfield, aide to the Physically Handicapped Transportation Unit, and this is for Tracy O'Connell-Novick. I would like to take this time to thank Tracy O'Connell-Novick for riding along with Justa and I on Route 29. I am so glad that you could see what it is like to be with our students first thing in the morning, and you also saw the connection we have with the students and families that we service. Regarding the pending memorandum of understanding, I am happy with the proposed tentative agreement and hope that it passes so that we may continue to service our families and watch transportation grow to take over all the routes. So again, thank you. From the EAW, from the instructional assistant para educator's perspective, from the Unit AB members, truly, we thank you for taking that time. And as a Norback para educator, anyone is welcome back in the fall to come and shadow me. It really is a great learning experience, and if you're, you know, you're representing school committee, it's, it's nice to see that you see what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. So again, thank you all for taking the time. We truly do appreciate it. Thank you.
I have, I have that. Okay, so we'll close this part of the meeting. We have, I forgot to do this at the beginning of the meeting, pursuant to action taken in executive session, move the ratified memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and NADAR 156, 52-week Administrative Secretary to the period of July 1st, 21 through June 3rd, 2022. Ro call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair John.
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Ro Call-Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Next up, we have reports to the Standing Committee, first one being the Finance and Operations Committee Monday, May 16th at 5:00 PM. Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our, our monthly, sorry, the, we, which one are you taking? The joint committee meeting or the?
I was doing the first one, May 16th. We can take them jointly together, is that easier?
Nope, nope, no May 16th. Okay, so the, the May 16th meeting was the joint meeting with the Education Committee of the City Council. So we not only had my colleagues, Vice Chair Kamara and Member Mailman, but we also had Vice Chair Forleo and Chair Nguyen, representing administration, we're acting administrator, acting city manager, Batista, Superintendent Benanda, and Dr. Frill. The, remember, this is a meeting where there's sort of things on their agenda and things on ours. We did have some comment, Dr. Ross gave us an update regarding the School Safety Office Task Force. You can see the numbers there in the minutes in terms of the response effectively of what has happened over.
of what has happened over the months since the school resource officers have been moved out of the building. The conclusion, in sum, is that the removal of the SROs has not led to more incidents. That was a fear. That is actually not something that has happened. And there was also a request from a member of the public that we create our own MOU to reflect the school liaison model. So, the first item, we have a sort of standing item that gets us together. That one was held. The first item was around the School Safety Task Force on the removal of the school resource officers. The conversation centered, Mr. Chair, really around the question of the MOU. And, you know, the notion of a statewide MOU being presented, that actually was of a different model than the model that we actually currently have. We did make some, part of the conversation that we had with the Education Committee was around the question of what was the sort of legal, potential legal implications of us operating, either under an MOU that was based on an outdated model that we were no longer using or operating effectively without one. And so, part of what the Education Committee was actually forwarding some questions off to the city solicitor to ask about that coverage. The question, the motions that we have coming out of that section was requesting that the administration report, provide a report on the school safety data collected by the School Safety Task Force, and the administration, asking the administration to provide a report on community-based justice practices that are currently being used in the Worcester Public Schools. And I should note that that's partly as a request of our colleagues in the City Council. On a roll call of three to zero, the motions were approved, and the item was held pending those items, as well as the items from the City Council side coming back. We then had a second item around a request that we evaluate and update compensation practices. Member Mailman presented this one relating to the section of the municipal charter, which I think we're all familiar with, that sets school committee salaries at 50% of City Council salaries, stating that this effectively is a holdover of times in which education was relegated to women. A member, Clorio, noted that all salaries, public official salaries in Worcester are not comparable. We did also have a conversation around the relative, the continued push for better representation in public office across Worcester, and the degree to which the salaries of elected officials are something that comes into people's contemplation as to whether or not they run for public office. On our side, the item was held. I should note that the Education Committee did have an item coming out of their subcommittee, which subsequently has been held on the council side. And then finally, Mr. Chair, we had the conversation around the City Council districts not actually running in parallel to school committee districts, the questions around a lack of clarity and confusion. We've actually obviously seen some of this subsequently reflected in the discussion with the Election Commission. We're advocating really across the board for greater clarity so that there is, the intent of the settlement of the lawsuit is fulfilled across the board in terms of there being greater participation, which is well-informed. And so, again, with this one, the Education Committee was actually the ones that took the motions out of their committee. On our side, after that discussion, the item was filed, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:10. So, the two items coming out, Mr. Chair, are what I would ask my colleagues to vote in support of the report.
Is the what?
The two items having to do with the report on school safety data and the community-based justice practices.
Ask for the reports, yeah.
Yep.
And the salary wasn't held, it was sent to the Law Department, I think. Okay, so we will, motion to approve. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Okay, so we'll get those reports. Next up is the meeting on June 9th, the Finance and Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, as my colleagues are aware, the monthly transportation update. At this point, the updates are updating so quickly that effectively, every time we get a report, it's potentially almost outdated. In attendance was myself and Vice Chair Kamara. Member Mailman was celebrating her mother's birthday. We had an update regarding driver availability. I should note for my colleagues, this is the last one that we will need for Durham School Services. The other thing is that we've had an ongoing update regarding the number of drivers who have been, received job offers. At the time of the meeting, eight candidates had gone through driver training and been hired. Job offers have been sent to 14 mid-side bus drivers that are currently working for Durham, six full-size drivers, and 23 bus monitors. There were, as of that date, 32 drivers in training and a new nightlife class that had just started the last day of May with five participants. If you drive by Northeast Cut Off, you'll see every day, basically, that there's more buses coming in. The district is leasing 35 full-size buses, 10 mid-size buses, and 10 mid-side wheelchair buses for the summer routes. Any additional buses that are needed in advance as a delivery, the new buses will be leased. However, the new buses are expected to be delivered in time for the start of school. There were updates even being given to transportation this week regarding that. And the mid-size buses and the wheelchair buses are expected for the fall. At this point, the plan for a dedicated fueling location is still being designed. It won't be completed until 2023. I do want to assure my colleagues, though, that there are arrangements being made in the meantime. And I did ask for an update on the MyStop application. Going out with the report cards will be an insert for families that gives them an update, not only as to this having, becoming available, but how to download the application, how to connect with, effectively claim their student, and so that they will then be ready to spin up for the fall as well. So, families will already, ahead of the first day of school, be able to have that data, which we know is crucial from all of us, to find out where school buses are. That has also, of course, been sent out for translation, and will go out in appropriate languages. So, on a roll call of 201, the item was held. We will be meeting again in July with another update. And then on a roll call of 201, the meeting was adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can just vote to accept.
Sorry about that. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? And we have, are these two new student reps for next year? Or can we introduce yourselves and what school you're from? Your name and, your name and school.
Hi, I'm Emma Robo, and I'm from South.
Welcome, Emma.
Hi, I'm Kendra Aneem, and I go to Worcester Technical High School.
Kendra, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
We also have two online, Nellie Rushton and then Giovanna Martinez. I also know that Mia Haynes is supposed to be on there. I don't know if she's on the second slide. But if you guys want to unmute yourself, turn your cameras on and say hello, and enter, you know, name and school.
Hi, I'm Nellie Rushton, and I go to Dorsey High.
Welcome, Nellie. Anybody else on there? Who'd you say, Stacia?
Giovanna Martinez.
Giovanna, I see.
North High.
And North High School?
Yep.
Well, welcome, Giovanna. Okay, good job. Welcome aboard. Can't wait to, you're juniors now? Is everybody a junior? You're going to be seniors? Yep. Very good. Okay, with that, we're going to move on the agenda. We'll try to take Section H together collectively, unless anybody wants to separate it out. To approve a prior fiscal payment amount of $228,054 as a salary adjustment for an employee. To approve a year fiscal payment amount of $1,682,28 cents as a salary adjustment for 42-week school clerical employee. Approve a prior fiscal payment amount of $2,400, and the project led the way. Collectively, on a roll call, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. So, we have, next up is N. We have N 2-165.1, Consider Proposed 2023 Budget and Responses. Can we file those, or do you want, can we file all those? So, motions to file, all those in favor, opposed or ordered? That brings us to 2-185. Consider all items filed by the school committee to have budgetary implications in light of the 2023 budget. The motion is to accept and to file. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? Response to the administration requests an update in the community on the Worcester Public Schools and COVID. Ma'am Superintendent?
So, through the chair. Our numbers do continue to go down for COVID-19. So, this week, June 10th to June 16th, we had 41 positive cases for students. That is 35 less than last week. We have no students quarantined, and we have 68 students on test-ins day, with a decrease of 110 from last week. For staff, we have 24 positive cases, 52 less than last week. We have zero staff in quarantine, and we have five staff in test-ins day, and that's the same as we had last week.
Questions? Thank you. Could be your last public health report?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, through the chair, I just can't remember. Next year, is there still test-ins day?
Through the chair, that's a very good question. So, as of the last email we got from the commissioner, there is not test-ins day anymore. They said that, well, we just had a webinar on Monday, and what they basically said is that they're going to, you know, wait and see what the virus does in mid-July. There'll be an update on what's going to be happening with COVID-19. So, there is, but they had said CIC, which is the group that works with it, it will not be employed next year or paid, any testing paid for by the state.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the motion is to hold for the next meeting. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? And a request that the administration allow the Worcester Bravehearts to discuss the organization's school-based opportunities that link students to reading. And, Member Kamara?
Thank you. I, so, Mr., yeah, I forget that part. So, Mr. Donning from the Worcester Bravehearts. We are pretty much well-aware that they run a series of programs that encourage students to read in, in our public schools. And then, one of my personal favorite, a program that allows students to learn about baseball, but then also about the careers in baseball, not just playing, but then the other careers that are a part of the baseball realm. And I thought that was very impressive, so I will encourage for him to be able to present. Maybe not today. I don't know if he's here today, because I was told that he wouldn't present today, but maybe the next meeting, so that he can talk in more detail.
I'll send that to the committee. They want to come in and talk to, we go to, I think, student teaching and learning?
Yes. Thank you.
So, send that to teaching and learning?
Yeah, and I think the administration can also speak to the fact that this year, there was, there was couples, schools that, where the students went to the Braveheart to see, you know, the different jobs, right? Can you speak on that a little bit?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So, we have a good relationship with the Bravehearts. As a matter of fact, there were several challenges that they offered to Worcester Public School students this year. One was how to change, change actually the rules of the game, and then to be able to go and see what that was like. So, we did have Worcester Public School Game Day events there also this year. So, they're very willing to be part of really anything that we ask in the schools. They're a good partner.
Thank you. So, we'll send that to the committee. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Next item is Member Kamara. To review the job descriptions of their wraparound coordinators and the school adjustment council to determine whether they meet the social, emotional, mental health, and wellness needs of the students, particularly the provision of counseling and therapeutic services being provided to students.
Thank you, through the chair. So, I think that item, and there's another one there for me, too, that all ties to the same topic.
We can do that one together if you want. To discuss the role of peer mental health supporters to target social, emotional, and mental health and wellness of the district.
Thank you. I think I will maybe halt my items on mental health, because there was an initial one where I talked about there being a strategic plan for the district to really look at it in relationship to the mental health task force, that comprehensive school-based mental health. So, but in my mind, I keep, you know, anyway. So, I would love for all of this to be a part of that, you know, bigger discussion going forward. And I am, you know, excited to be able to work with, so I've been able to work with this leadership and then also the incoming leadership on these, these things, my items.
So, we're going to send the first one to the administration, so you can move on that, on the, is that okay?
Yeah, and then T L. It is.
On the other one, we'll send it to, worry. Okay. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? And next item up is to consider renewal of the contract between the Worcester School Committee and the law office, Sean Sweeney, with the proposed contract duration of September 2022 through September 19, 2025, and the prerogative of the school committee. So, the motion would be to approve that, along with consider renewal of the contract between the Worcester School Committee and Murphy, who's the mayor, and Murphy, with a proposed contract duration of July 1st, 2022, through June 3rd, 2025. If that goes on the roll call, roll call. Yeah.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Since Sean Sweeney, I think, is on the phone, can we skip to his item at the end here? And so, he doesn't have to stay around this much longer. Sorry about that, Sean. The item is 2-195, Consider How the School Committee Would Treat Juneteenth As Relates to Non-Representative Employees. So, the motion would be to approve the Juneteenth for administrators with, Juneteenth holiday for administrators with employment contracts, full-year, full-year work year, and also non-representative employees without a employment contract, full-year work year. And, that's it? All those, I don't know if you're roll call on that, we should do a roll call. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Number O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on, Ms. McCullough, To Work With UMass Medical School In Skin Cancer Awareness and Free Sun Block Stations. Ms. McCullough?
As it reads.
I refer that to the administration, and file items 2-24. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? To Explore Utilizing Retired Educators to Help With Current Hiring Gaps. Ms. McCullough?
As it reads.
And there is, this is, people realize they took the restrictions out for calendar year 2022 year for retirement purposes, so, meaning the hours worked and the pay, so, okay. That was disapproved June 4th, I think, by the state, so, okay. Okay, as it reads, The Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues. Okay, those in favor, opposed or ordered? Consider Proposed Improvements to the Full-Ear Stadium Complex. Send that to Finance. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Ms. Novick, To Review and Update School District Transportation Policies To Align With the School Public, Worcester Public Schools Method Of Providing Transportation Beginning on July 2022. Ms. Novick?
So, just to clarify to my colleagues, the transportation policies, as they stand, talk a lot about contracted services. And of course, as of July 1, we will no longer have contracted transportation services, so we will update them in Finance and Operations and bring them back for our July meeting.
Okay. And that brings us, anything else, ma'am, of course? We're good? Okay, well, see you people in about 32 days. No, but, so, enjoy your summer, enjoy your July 4th. And I'm sure we've seen each other before the end of June, at different events. So, we have a motion to adjourn. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Stacia, congratulations and good luck.